This is the February nineteenth meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Dina Kondo Dimitraki. Counselor Brent Todd.
Here.
David Fox.
Here.
Jeffrey Santa Cruz.
Here.
Amanda Savage.
Here.
Matthew Biggs. Teresa Rosenberg. And Chair Woodburn.
Here, present, accounted for. Ready to roll. So let's do first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the planning board meeting of January fifteenth. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
I will.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Everybody who's here. So those passed, we'll move on to a quick agenda overview. If you are here for item nine A, which is one fifteen River Road, or nine B, which is Shaker Road. Both of those, both of those have been continued to the March nineteenth meeting, and those, those were done in a previous motion, so we don't need to move those, correct?
No, we need to take that one.
Oh, it says in previous motion. Look at that. Continued to March nineteenth in previous motion. Ah, scotch, okay. So I would love to take a motion to, to move both of those items from tonight's agenda to the March nineteenth meeting.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so those will be moved. Moves us into design review applications by consent. Anybody in the audience that's here for items five A through five E? Those items are held, will be addressing those in consent. If somebody has any, they'd like to pull off the agenda, just make yourself known. Any member of the board have any items they want to pull from the consent agenda? No? If not, any member of the audience have any they want to pull? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda with architectural design review recommendations as submitted?
So moved.
Motion's been made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Determination of completeness by consent, we have none, correct?
Correct.
Extension of by consent, so we've got seven A. Can we read that into the record and tell us what's going on with that?
Tom Wilson and Wilson and Wilson Architects, on behalf of Pizano's Realty LLC, request a one-year extension to the March twentieth, twenty twenty-four conditionally approved minor site plan application for an addition of twelve hundred square feet to an existing eight thousand square foot building for the purpose of four additional dwelling units at fifty-nine South Main Street in the Central Business Performance District.
Okay, so this is a consent item as well. No public testimony, no comments. And the audience on determination of completeness. So we're just looking for an extension of existing approved plan, right?
Yeah, it's a one-year extension, so basically we just need a motion.
Questions from the board? Take a motion to extend that plan. If someone'd like to make a motion to, to grant that extension request? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, brings us to the end of our consent agenda item and right into our public hearing section. No design review applications, and again, items nine A and nine B have been continued to the next meeting. It brings us rapidly to item nine C. If we could read item nine C into the record.
Yes, sir. Michael G. and Eileen M. Gaffar request approvals for a minor subdivision and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for a lot line adjustment between twelve Tejant Street and eleven Summit Street in the neighborhood residential district.
Okay, can we get a staff update on this?
Sure, we'll need a completeness.
Okay, I can do, we can do that, or we can, yeah, we can do that. So why am I not seeing my report?
Because it's downloading. That's not good.
There it is. It came in. Okay, so staff has determined the application complete and not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
I will.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. So Alec, is this your project?
Yep.
Okay, quick update?
Quick staff update. The applicant, it's a lot line adjustment between two parcels of the same owner. The applicant is requesting a number of waivers, all but one that staff supports. And the one that staff is, is not recommending the planning board approve is just referencing waivers granted to a previous but similar project. We want that off that plan. We're recommending conditional approval. Without, send it over to Mr. Gaffar.
Okay. If you could state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Michael Gaffar. I'm the owner of the two properties that are at issue here. This is essentially an amendment, a modification, if you will, of a prior lot line adjustment that this board granted in October of twenty twenty-three. It's on record at American County Register of Deeds as of, I believe, last, excuse me, last March, March or April, I guess it's actually in April. And that lot line adjustment was to accommodate the construction of a garage, which is situated basically spanning the two properties, and this carved off a piece of eleven Summit Street to accommodate the garage and attach it to twelve Tejant Street. The matter you have before you now is simply a modification of that plan to move the, the bulk of the lot line between the two properties from, let me back up a little bit. I live at twelve Tejant Street, and I've lived there for forty-seven years, and for those forty-seven years, my property line between my property and the property behind me, eleven Summit Street, was six feet behind my house. The property in between those two houses has always been treated, it's, was common property, and by agreement with my, with prior owner of eleven Summit, we basically used it. I, we put a garden on it, put a sidewalk on it, we maintained it. And what I'm trying to do now is change the lot line to indicate that instead of being six feet behind the Tejant Street property, I'm moving it to six feet behind the Summit property. This required variances from the zoning board of adjustment, which were granted in July of twenty twenty-four, corrected and modified in January of twenty twenty-five. So that's what's before you at the present time.
Okay, and there's a bunch of waiver requests, denial requests, or denial recommendation from staff for the waiver for section twelve oh two, three, which is a standards note to allow for the plan to reference waivers granted for previous lot line adjustment. And that, you're fine with that not being granted?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll be asking for the same waivers to attach to the, to the, the present application, yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Okay, well, it looks pretty straightforward. Any questions from the board? Six feet, huh? You can do a lot in six feet.
I could have asked for one for it.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
But I, I'm comfortable with the six feet.
Good, okay. Okay, so again, we're gonna, we're gonna take the denial, which is eight point three in your packet. We have to, can we do an approval of all the others and deny the one, or how do you want to handle that, Emery?
Or we can just deny it. I can just make a motion to deny eight point three, which is the...
Okay, so eight point three in your packet, deny the waiver of section twelve oh three to three, excuse me. Pardon me? Findings of fact. We'll use the findings of fact of this well-put-together report, the testimony that we heard here tonight, and the information that's in our packet as our findings of fact for, for making the decision on this. And again, recommendation to deny the waiver from staff. I'll make a motion that we deny the waiver request outlined in eight point three for section twelve point oh two, three standards notes in your packet. Would someone like to second that motion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is to grant the minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment between twelve Tejant Street and eleven Summit Street as submitted, subject to the following conditions, and they are outlined in precedent conditions one A through the X. I was gonna say the entire alphabet, but X. Precedent conditions two, three, four, five, and six, and subsequent conditions one and two. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
I move.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That motion carries, you're all set.
Could we, could we, eight point two, grant the waivers?
I thought... We denied the one.
We denied the one. Ah, so we'll step back to eight point two. Thank you, Alec, for paying attention, and that's why I missed the recommendations and the findings of facts. Eight point two is to grant the waiver request below, and those are outlined in section A through I. And again, we've already denied the other ones. Someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request as outlined in eight point two of your packet?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded from the end of the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor, aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Now you're all set. Thank you very much.
All set?
You are good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge the administrative assistance from Ms. Skinner to get this thing squared away. So thank you.
Very, very, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure they appreciate it. We, I know we do, because it's often a lot easier on us, so thank you for saying something. Okay, that moves us rapidly to item nine D in the agenda tonight. If we could read that into the record?
Reardon Property Services LLC requests approval for a conditional use permit application for disturbance to a wetland buffer and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for the new construction of a house at five five seven Mountain Road in the medium-density residential district.
Okay, we gotta do nine D and ninety separately?
Well, they're, they're different properties, yeah.
Perfect, yeah, okay. All right, is there determination of completeness on this?
Yes.
Okay, staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
I will.
So moved. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are open. Let's get a quick staff update, if we could?
Sure. Staff is recommending conditional approval, and it's a CUP request for impacting wetland buffers, just a small impact to install footing drain. The application went before the Conservation Commission. They recommended approval as submitted, and the applicant is not requesting any waivers.
No waivers?
I know, right?
That's something we've heard of.
There are regulations do build in a little bit of latitude with the CUPs.
That's what we like to hear, a little bit of latitude. Welcome back to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Erin Reardon Lambert. I'm here on behalf of Reardon Property Services, who are the builders that are going to develop the lot. So yes, we went to Conservation Commission, and they were supportive of. It's a very small impact to the wetland buffer, seventy-seven square feet, to install a foundation drain. Basically, there's high groundwater table. They lift the building three, three and a half feet, but it would look out of place. It would look like it was sort of standing out of the ground, and nobody wants to have a sump pump that they need to rely on. So we appreciated their endorsement of the request. Staff did have a, a recommendation that we add erosion control to the, to the plan, as well as restoring it with a native wetland planting, and we represented to the Cons Con that we will do that. So with that, we appreciate your consideration.
Okay, any discussion, any conversations from the board? Just clear questions, yep.
So there is no roof drain going and tying into this at all, so this is just completely...
This is just a foundation drain, yes.
Okay, I guess there's no member of the audience has any questions or concerns. So we will close the public hearing. And using our, what's that? Using our information we've heard here tonight, the information that's in our packet as our findings of fact, we will adopt those findings of fact and look to the packet, which will give us eight point two is to grant the conditional use permit for Article twenty-eight four three D, conditional use permits required for certain disturbance of wetland buffers. And those are outlined for this particular property at five seventy-seven Mountain Road, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through, one A through F, two through, two through four, and subsequent conditions one through six. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit for Article twenty-eight four three D as outlined?
Move approval.
May I amend your motion? You said one A through, yeah, it's one A through G.
One A through, I got F.
Five five seven is just F.
What?
Are you on five six three or five five seven?
I'm on eight two, A.
Right, but you're on nine D. Are you on nine E in your agenda? Because there's two mountain roads right next to each other.
I'm on nine D.
Yeah.
It's through F, yeah.
Okay.
Is that, that's the one we're doing, right, nine D?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, nine, the other one is...
Nine E's a little different, okay. Nine, so again, we've got precedent conditions one, A through F, two, three, and four, subsequent conditions one through six, and you've moved it for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and that's it. Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item nine E. Again, Reardon Properties LLC requests approval for conditional use permit application for disturbance of wetland buffer and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for the new construction of a house at five sixty-three Mountain Road? So two houses topping?
Correct.
In the medium-density residential RM district. Didn't the other one say it? Was it five seventy-seven?
Five five seven.
All right, any staff update on this?
Nope, don't forget to determine it complete. This, the only difference with this application and our recommended conditions is that G, which is to issue with the proximity of the water well to the, of a wetland on site.
Okay, again, determination of completeness component, staff has found the application complete, excuse me, staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing? Motion's made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Anything you want to add to this, Erin?
Nope, the only thing I wanted to add was related to that final condition. So the project did receive state subdivision approval in two thousand twenty-one through New Hampshire DES, so we'll follow up with them and find out what, if anything, needs to be done. We have a little bit of leeway to shift the well or, or get a waiver, whatever's required. But it did receive subdivision.
And that's, that's outlined in precedent condition one G, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and approve that or deny it tonight, and then you can go from there.
We good with that condition, Erin?
Pardon me?
I was just making sure we're good with that condition.
Yep. Well, I don't know. Are we good with that condition?
Staff is.
That's, yeah, okay. All right. So again, in same, same as we did before, the findings of fact that we're gonna be using are the information that we received tonight, the testimony that we got, and we'll use that as our findings of fact to outline the motions below. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the conditional use permit from Article twenty-eight four three D, conditional use permits required for certain disturbance of wetland buffers, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one A through G, two, three, and four, and subsequent conditions one through six. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That is good. We're all set with that. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item nine F in our agenda. I'll let you read it in the record this time. How's that?
Sean Landry, on behalf of Sean Landry, R. Shep Milnick, and Joanne Linden, request an amendment to a minor subdivision application condition approved on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, for waivers from section twelve point zero four, twelve point zero five, twelve point zero seven, twelve point zero eight three, twelve point zero eight four, twelve point zero eight thirteen, fifteen point zero two eight, and fifteen point zero two nine of the subdivision regulations for a lot line adjustment between two two four and two two six Little Pond Road in the Open Space Residential District.
All right, determination of completeness? No?
Nope.
No determination of completeness? Let's get a quick staff update, if we can, on this.
Sure. Applicant is requesting some waivers from some of the conditions from their previous approval. Staff is recommending the planning board approve most of them, all but two, and that's, that's the short of it. This was just a lot line adjustment between two lots.
Okay, so for the record, the denial of the waivers is twelve oh eight thirteen for flood hazard and fifteen oh two eight for address. Do not require the property address of each of the two lots. Okay, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure, I'm Sean Landry. I'm on two two four Little Pond Road.
All right. Anything you want to add to the discussion that we've got here tonight? And again, we, we look at these things with staff recommending the denial of those two waivers. Any reason that they shouldn't be denied?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Perfect, okay.
Nope, thank you.
We're good with that. Any questions from the board? Looks pretty straightforward. So in your packet, again, we'll use as our findings of fact here tonight, the information that's been submitted by the applicant, the staff report that we've got. And we will move to the recommendation piece under eight point two, a popular number tonight. Eight point two is to grant the waiver request below from the listed sections of the subdivision regulations, using the criteria of RSA six seventy-four thirty-six two N one, and section thirty-five point oh eight of the subdivision regulations, and those are outlined in item A through G. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waiver requests as outlined? Motion's been made. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is deny the waiver requests, again, using the same criteria of the state regulations and section thirty-five oh eight of the subdivision regulations, outlined in section twelve oh eight thirteen for flood hazard and fifteen oh two eight for addresses. Would someone like to make a motion to deny those waivers as outlined? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is to grant approval of the amendment to the condition of approval for the previously, ooh, that's a low, look at that, grant approval of the amendment to the conditions of the approval for the previously approved minor subdivision application for the lot line adjustment between two two four and two two six Little Pond Road, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in conditions A and B. Those aren't subsequent or precedent conditions, those are just conditions, right? Okay, so conditions A and B. Would someone like to make a motion to grant approval of the amendment as outlined?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emery, Alec.
Yeah, again.
For your help.
You're welcome. You're getting all the compliments.
You're popular tonight. It makes a difference, you guys. It makes a difference. Okay, any other business to legally come before the board tonight? Again, I mentioned it previously, I just want to mention it again. As we move through to the, as we move through to the master plan preparation phases, as we move through the end of this year and into next year, or as we move through this year, hopefully, and be able to get things into, into shape next year, we need to do some cleaning up. There's some regulations that need to be cleaned up, there's some language that needs to be cleaned up, there's some zoning information that needs to be cleaned up, some, again, language that needs to be cleaned up, and then some specific areas, parking and conservation and, and other things that, that need a little bit of attention. So I'm looking for, and I don't know if you want to pile on on that at all, but I, I mean, is that kind of where, that, the information that we want to be gathering as we move forward with meetings or listening sessions, or whatever we might want to call them?
And it, it's just a handful of items, essentially some setbacks, parking, signs, definitions, accessory dwelling units, and then just some general, general cleanup in the zoning ordinance where there's things that are incorrect.
So, and again, we've seen them come to us before, so whether it's ADUs or signs or lighting or snow removal, whatever it might be, if there's items that you're, you know, boy, we dress that all the time, why can't we fix that? Why can't we do that? Why can't we have more stringent fines on, on non-conforming signs or whatnot? So there's a lot of stakeholders that want a little bit of feedback on this as well, so a lot So there's a lot of stakeholders that want a little bit of feedback on this as well, a lot of public stakeholders, and we want to hear it. So we want to be able to set these up so there's, you know, ADUs and those types of things for the development community that they may be interested in, where they may not be interested in, in, you know, signage and, and parking and other things. I'm thinking it's a couple, three meetings that we're gonna have to do to address the, the needs and invite the people, anybody, but we know we want to have certain people in the room to address the ADU piece of it from the development community and then other communities. I'm looking for ideas, and I think it's, it's, my thought was a, an off night meeting from six to seven or something like that. Or Jeff, you mentioned a Saturday morning meeting, which I hate, but it certainly would do it. Certainly would do it if, if that was what we thought we could do, but if anybody's got ideas that you've done this before, those community listening sessions, those outreach sessions, I'm all ears.
I think if, if we find a night to do an off night, I don't think an hour's gonna be enough. We saw that very clearly when we were talking the height regulation, and that was just one item.
Right.
We start talking, lumping on a lot, and we get a lot of input. We can't do a six to seven and just cut people off. I think it's gonna have to be a, a working session, no other planning board agenda other than dealing with that.
Yep.
So that we can really just focus to get the people in the room.
And I would recommend doing it by topic.
No, you would or wouldn't?
Not having one meeting for everything.
Oh, right, right, right.
We also have a lot of legislation right now with housing.
ADUs in particular, I know.
Just basically, there's a lot, there's a lot of movement to blow up zoning in this state, so we gotta be on top of that.
Okay. That's a very good point.
Yeah, and I, if, and I follow it pretty closely, and I'm actually hoping that the state legislature will pass it all, and then
And we can react.
Most of it will be a moot point in our ordinance.
What's the timeframe is before June?
We'll have taken care of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I...
It'll be done by the end of June.
Yeah.
Probably most of it will be done by...
And then some of the dates, right, and some of the dates, some of the bills were giving municipalities a year to enact.
Yep.
Which is good.
Yeah.
And others will be sixty days or whatever.
Yeah, but that, that would, that would give us a jumping off point to say, okay, the legislature just passed this. How's it gonna affect us? Or does, it takes, like, like Anne Marie said, it might fix all, a lot of the problems that we're gonna try to address.
Yeah.
Let the legislature address it, and then we don't have to deal with it.
I'll give you one example. Manufactured home, housing being allowed in every residential unit.
Every residential district?
Yeah.
Sorry, district, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Isn't that just a local thing? Why do we have the state telling us that?
Because locals, locals won't put it in.
Yeah, because a lot of municipalities aren't doing it.
Yeah.
Isn't that kind of their choice, though?
Yeah, well...
Well, we don't allow it. Concord doesn't allow manufactured homes.
And a lot of, most of the residential districts, they don't, yeah.
And, I mean, these are coming out of committee unanimous, these votes.
At all.
So why wouldn't they, if they meet code?
Only in a park.
So why, why couldn't you, if they meet code, I guess is...
Well, that's a good question.
Ask whoever wrote the zoning ordinance.
I know, but even at the local level, why wouldn't they, if it meets code? That's just my question.
Well, they should be. I mean, I've never...
Is that gonna include tiny houses?
It's very strange that...
And we're talking about manufactured homes. Are you putting tiny houses in the manufacturing home based on the square footage?
No, no, there's a complete, a manufactured home is a completely different definition. There's a definition for many, and it depends on if you want to use the definition from the International Building Code, which is then again another definition. It's very, and that is different than prefab.
Right, and it also depends on whether it's on a foundation or still on its original wheels and all this type of...
They're on a foundation if they're manufactured.
And that's in the bill. And there's also
We, we don't have any
Housing and Commercial.
In Concord, in our residential districts, for manufactured houses or?
Unless they're a lot.
Flat out.
Yeah.
Unless they're like a park.
Unless they're a park.
Unless they're a park.
Which is unbelievable to me.
I mean, the, what's happening now is, I mean, because of the housing crisis and the recognition that the burden is falling on cities primarily.
Sure.
And I mean, this is bipartisan support, like I've never seen on an issue, so.
Great.
Teresa would, has been around this longer than I have, but it's, it's...
And they are moving, moving quickly.
Good. So that may precipitate a little bit of change. Maybe we address items that aren't gonna be addressed in that, you know, zoning related issues or parking or, you know, town driven, city driven types of things. But, so taking that into consideration, and that will delay some of the, the big picture stuff for ADUs and manufactured housing. What's, what, what's the best way to handle it? Is it a nighttime meeting for two hours or three hours or whatever it might be?
I just suggested a Saturday sometime.
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine. Or we could do, I mean, I just, I think it's, I think it's having a meeting, you know, letting everybody know that this is coming up. Here's the items that are gonna be addressed, and we're addressing them for cleanup and zoning changes to get ready for master planning in, in 2026.
So, so people have to understand that these aren't gonna be changed that occur before the master plan. They'll be part of the master plan.
Well, some of them will be, no, some of them will be.
It won't be part of the master plan at all. This is an interim zoning ordinance amendment to clean up things ahead of the master plan, so it, it won't be anything substantive enough that requires a change to the master plan. So no zoning changes, no creation of new zoning districts, no elimination of existing zoning districts.
So what about, we've talked before about parking falling out of zoning and falling with this?
That is part of it.
So that's not enough of a change to the master plan?
David?
No, you answered my question. Thank you.
So what if we did, still on a Wednesday, because, and then just do it on a different week?
Yeah.
Whether it's the first or the second instead of the Thursday like that.
I mean, we could start...
I have to be careful with the Wednesday, because the first Wednesday is zoning board, the second Wednesday is Conservation Commission, third Wednesday, so that leaves...
Yeah, so, oh, there's another day. I just, for some reason, I guess I didn't realize what day those were, so.
A Thursday or Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I was trying to think of days that make it easy for everybody. Oh, we always think of planning one on Wednesdays.
So the first flag up the pole here on my, on mine was, do we think that's a good idea? I don't want to have too many cooks in the kitchen on the other side of the fence, too. Do we want to have the entire board here? Do we want to have architectural design review when, when we're addressing areas that fall into them? Then you've got twenty people sitting here, plus the public, and everybody's got a, a stake in the ground at that point.
Do we have to have the entire?
No, 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 we could have one or two people. We could have a subcommittee.
So we're not making, this isn't anything that's making a vote?
No, we could have a subcommittee of the planning board, then we say three people and one person for architectural design, and those four people represent us as the planning board, and then every month, you know, we get an update that says, hey, this is what we talked about at the session, and we can attend or we can go. I mean, I'm wide open for, for options. I just don't want it to be this big conglomerate of people sitting and everybody having a, to feel like they gotta have a, you know, something to say and, and a, a way to do something. And that's what's gonna happen. That's why it's a three hour meeting.
But that's...
That's the way it is. But I'd rather have it, I'd rather have it, everybody sitting in the audience and have much less people kind of taking the information in and then feeding it back to the, to the bigger group.
I like that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that, and we could switch them out, you know, if somebody is very passionate about the ADUs and the, and the housing piece, we have, you know, maybe a couple extra people, or those people handle that, somebody else on the parking and, and that piece of, and whatever. And we'll, we'll get that point, but I guess that's kind of the angle that we're gonna take, and I can work with Matt and Anne Marie to kind of say, okay, you know, three sessions or four sessions if we had to, but three or four sessions to address all the issues. Let's put them in buckets, figure out who wants to participate on our side, who wants to participate in some of the other, whether it's zoning people that, you know, zoning board wants to participate, whether it's, you know, again, I just don't want it to be so big and cumbersome that nothing gets done, or everybody does a thing. So Todd?
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I, I think, I agree with what you said. I think that's a good approach. And then, I mean, that happens all the time in all the various committees that have subcommittees. They just report back to the, to the major committee with, with what's going on. I guess the only other thing I was thinking of is it's, it probably will be helpful to the public to be able to provide them in advance with certain information and details about what the specific topic is, what the issues are that we're trying to address or correct.
And that's, I think, what staff will do, is they'll say, hey, here's the existing zoning law, you know, this is the, the language that we, or not zoning law, but here's the existing ordinance as it's written. This is the, the problematic language as we see it. We'd like feedback from you, the public, on how we can change this and that. And we may get some great ideas, we may get some, some terrible ideas, but at least we get them. At least we get the, the feedback.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, or people see, like, yep, very happy, that's the way you want to do it. What I don't want to have happen is I don't want staff to do all the work, come up with the recommendations and, and say, we want it to say this. What do you think? I want it to be, you know, we could, we could say it this way, we could say it this way, you know, this is the language that we want to change. What do you see? And what, what do you feel? And then get that feedback, and then formulate a response. Come back and say, here's what, here's, based on what we heard, here's what we think the new, the new should be, give them one more crack at it to say, okay, that's great, or could you make this change? And we saw that in, in, when, when we dealt with Matt and the height thing, it took a little bit to get there, but, you know, we, we crafted it up with Liz's help and all the different people weighing in, and we got to a, a pretty good, you know, compromise all the way around, and I think we could do the same with this. Just, I want to do it as efficiently as we can. David?
You, you talked a little bit about focusing on one, like on parking, on one of these meetings. Does it make any sense for different people to become more expertise in, in these, and so the same people aren't doing all of them?
Exactly what it, that's exactly what I'd like to see. I'd like to see everybody shifted, you know, if we took everybody and said, hey, everybody's gotta sit for at least one of the meetings, break it up and figure out what you like, what you don't like, and, and, and off you go.
Or you can get good at a particular subject.
You gotta like something. You can't not like everything, so.
Well...
But again, same thing with other people coming in as well.
Yeah.
You know, and there's nothing to say... There's nothing to say that we couldn't get some outside help as well, you know, and bring someone in from the outside. So, you know, if there's, you know, the development piece in particular with the housing and the, you know, if we bring in a couple of, you know, the, the regional people that develop in the area that know the business and know the climate and understand it, I'd like to hear from them. Not even in a capacity as the public, but maybe sitting on the other side of the table and saying, hey, let's craft it this way or this way, so. We're wide open, so I guess that's the only thing. I don't want to solve it all tonight, and we can all go, but that's kind of the, the approach. And then if we can get an update from Matt maybe next month on how things are flowing through the legislature.
Yeah, I'll try to... Yeah, I'll try to get a little summary.
Yeah. Or, and, and at least, you know, here's all the things that are gonna, are, are looking to be addressed, and then we can kind of say, okay, they're not addressing these that we've got trouble with, then we can address them from that point. But that's a great point. I don't want to...
And next year, there's gonna be another?
Another round?
Another round.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right. With that, we are at the end of the, we are at the end of the agenda, so I will take a motion to adjourn. If someone would like to make that motion to adjourn? We got a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.